August the 4th, 2027 PM. And like to turn it over to Mayor Frye for the flag saluting and vacation. Everybody, please use your mute buttons. If you're not, if you don't have the floor, we're going to turn over to the mayor. So just so that there's not a whole lot of background noise, just mute yourself.
Okay, take a moment to think of the people that are dying, getting sick from this virus. Okay. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council President Papaleo.
Present.
Councilman Kyle Willis.
Present.
Councilwoman Lee Daly.
Present.
Councilman Nick Waters.
Here.
Councilwoman Melinda Isaac.
Present.
Councilman Jason McGuigan.
Here.
Councilman Robert Ruskowski.
Here.
Mayor Bob Frye.
Here.
Alex.
Present.
And I'm here.
All right. Are we doing audience participation first, Andrew, or are we going to pass along to Lisa Catania for the engineer's report?
There was no audience participation.
Okay, very good. Ms. Catania?
That, that makes it easy for, for passing it on to me. I think you probably have a copy of my report. I'm not sure what's in your pack. Do you have a copy of my report? Do you also have a copy of the bid tabulation for the road program?
Lisa, I didn't, I typically don't send that out until we approve it. So no, I did not send it out.
Okay. All right, that, that's probably something we need to have for the meet, actual meeting.
Yeah.
In two weeks, so that you can take a look at it. Couple of things. In my report, I noted that ground properties did receive a review. However, it was just a completeness review for DEP, for the basin changes that need to be made. That's the Dollar General for those who weren't aware of the, the property owner. I will tell you that it's probably going to be another 30 days before, before they will get any comments back. So we're probably looking at the fall before any of the work will be completed. Safe Store, I'm hoping the, the revised plans have some minor revisions that need to be made, but we're making progress with those. So I believe that they have requested that they be put on the agenda for the meeting in two weeks for a final conditional land development approval. They did get their PennDOT permit. FEMA is going to be a challenge for them. They received a review from FEMA of about, I think it was 30 plus comments that need to be addressed. I did have a conversation last Thursday with Jim Burt, who is the representative for Safe Store, and they are hoping to have something back to FEMA. There's some cross-sectional, that information that wasn't in their packet, nor did they do the survey work to have it as part of the packet. So that has to be completed. Jim is, is pretty certain that within the next two weeks, they'll have something back to FEMA. Formcraft, we sent the municipal cost estimate over for inclusion into the municipal security agreement. So that is moving forward. The road program, we did receive bids. We had got six bidders for the road program. And as I told you last month, what we did was we put the base bid in, which was all of the priority roads, we're calling it, other than the PICO work. The PICO work was a, was an alternate one and two. We did it just, alternate one was Ravenwood and Summit, and alternate two was the rest of the village, which was all the PICO one lane work that needed to get done. AF Damon, who did the 2019 road program, was low bid at $93,341. So we will, at the next meeting, ask for an award of that, of that base bid. The alternate, if you remember, we did it to determine what we needed to budget for next year to do the other half of the roadway, once PICO is finished. I have a meeting tomorrow for one of my other municipalities with Michelle Garrity, who is the, the municipal rep, to talk about the Bear Steel project. So I'll get a better feel of where they stand tomorrow when I meet with her. I also have the last payment for AF Damon for the 2019 road program. That's in the amount of $2,780.75. We'll have a resolution for the Act 537 for the, for the municipal complex with sanitary connection that'll have to be taken care of. I have also the final invoice in the amount of $750 for anchor seal coating. One thing I wanted to talk to you about, actually, there's two things that I wanted to talk to you about. One is the Primus Avenue walkway. If you've seen, seen my report for probably the last three months, the borough was involved with a lawsuit. And there was some issues with, with some of the concrete work that's on the approach of, that goes down to the Antrak station. What we did was we had, or now come in and give us a price to do that concrete work. It's under the $4,000 threshold. But my suggestion is, depending on, on budget, that we get that completed, because if someone else falls in that area, we'll have another lawsuit. So I just think that that's something that we need to take care of sooner than later.
I hate to interrupt. Andrew, make sure that that's on the agenda for next meeting.
Andrew, I'll send those, those bids over to you again, or that bid proposal over to you again.
Got it. I, I have the bid proposal, but the, just to be clear. Add motion for, how would you word that, Lisa?
I would just, just to have, or now complete the, the work further proposal. It's on both sides of the approach. It's the same side of the bridge along Elmwood, not, excuse me, not along Elmwood, along Primus. And it's, it's at both stairwells, the stairs that are going, going down to the station, either side of the tracks. I also, I didn't receive it from, from Fallcroft, but I did get from some of my other municipalities, a, from Delaware County Planning Department is putting together their mapping for transportation projects, just wish list. What, what's the borough thinking about various projects that involve transportation, whether it's walkability, bike trails, the actual roadway, road safety? There is a list of, it's probably about eight pages long of various things that need to be repaired or upgraded with all the traffic signals. So for example, we could actually put those signals as one package to upgrade those signals at certain intersections to get some of that work done. When there's a grant available, Penn, the, the planning department has been contacting us and saying, hey, there's money available under this particular grant. For example, there's a, what's called a green light go grant. We were going to do it a few years ago, and I don't remember why it didn't happen, but it, it didn't go through. That green light go grant is enough to get you some new pedestrian signals, so that when somebody hits the button, the pedestrian singles, signals flash or vocally say, wait, 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 before you can actually go. So there's a lot of various upgrades to signals that you could do with that program. And you would get a phone call, either from Tom Schaefer or Corey Brown, saying, hey, this, this grant is available, and this is the deadline, we saw this project. So there's a whole bunch of listings. Delmar Drive corridor of safety, maybe putting in a, a trail somewhere. There's a whole bunch of things. I guess put your thinking caps on in your wish list, but we need to put it on the actual mapping, and I do have that link, so we can put the, everything together, various projects you may consider.
When you say it's a trail, is that like the, the hike trail that I'm, I'm passionate about? Is that what that, that would be?
Possibly, yes. And there's other, you know, we put that on there, and maybe you go for a, a DCNR grant for trails, because there is a specific grant application for trails. Or even the multimodal grant. There's a PennDOT multimodal grant. You can do streetscapes with that multimodal grant. There's a DCD multimodal grant as well. Those are, one's 25% match, one's 50% match. So you look at those, some of them, you, you have to pay a hundred dollar fee to, to apply for, for those particular grants. But they're available, and, and they, the planning department has, has really been aggressive. Tom Schaefer actually sits on the DVRPC board. So he's the Director of Transportation Planning for the county. So he really does push for Delaware County projects. And as long as he knows that they're there, and you know, he knows that you put the application in, he's really a, a good advocate for, for that particular project. So I wanted to mention it, we need to do that sooner or later, like by the end of, of August. So if anybody has any projects that you're thinking of, I can throw some together that, that we've talked about in the past. We know we talked about the corridor. And, and go from there. Maybe think a little bit out of that.
Yeah, let's, I mean, if, if the funds are there, if, if there's opportunity, I think we should take advantage of it. Lisa, what do you think would be something good for us to pursue?
Well, it's, it's just a wish list, Joe. So what you're doing is you're putting, there's a pin, so there's a map. You've put the location in, it puts a pin on the map. You have to tell what the description of the project is, what you think the anticipated cost would be. Say we do Delmar Drive, for example, and we want to put a streetscape project together. So you're probably looking, that would probably be somewhere around three, three and a half million dollars. Do sidewalks, curbs, landscaping, possibly traffic calming, changing some of the parking areas, new traffic signals through that corridor. So you would just put that, that whole list in, and then you go to the next project, and you just, that's all they're looking for. They're not looking for a specific project. They're looking for, what do you see coming down the road for your municipality?
Okay.
So.
I think that's a great idea. I think it's a great thing. Let's, let's work together on that and see what we can come up with.
Okay.
If anybody has anything to add, email me. Any other council members? Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Lisa. I know you're in the middle.
I'm done, actually, unless somebody has any questions.
I do, actually. So there's, um, there's a traffic triangle at the corner of Primus and Delmar. As you're coming, like, uh, if you, like, say if you're leaving Borough Hall, go down, there's this big ugly concrete traffic triangle that's hideous. And I, I'm looking at it, I'm like, there's all this concrete space in the middle of that triangle, can we jackhammer that out and can we green it? Put some tiger lilies in there, just make it look a little bit more presentable.
That is actually, that section of the road is actually PennDOT roadway. So what we would have to do, that's, that's what they would consider a mountable curve. We would have to request that, from PennDOT, that that be changed. They would give you a maintenance agreement, because you would have to maintain that particular landscape area, but they're doing that all over the place. We're doing a roundabout currently in one of my other municipalities, and we didn't want it to be just concrete.
Yeah.
The whole center of it is going to be landscaping, but we, we as municipality are going to have to own and maintain that. So they, there's a, there's an agreement that has to be made. That's all.
I, I, okay.
You know, it'd be nice to put something like a landscaping bed in there with a welcome to, to.
Right.
Fall crawl sign.
Yeah. I think I'd like to see that. I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but it's the first thing, one of the first things you see when you're coming into town from that side. And, and I, you know, we got to try and pretty it up a little bit. All right, so let me bring my agenda back up, because I think that brings us to me, under Finance and Administration. So I would like to discuss borough employee policies related to attendance and social media. So we would like to put together an attend, we, we don't have a formal attendance policy or a social media policy, and it's something that I want to discuss with members of council. You know, I mean, we're, we're in a situation where resources are always finite, and so are human resources, and so we need to have people, in, in a way, manage the way that they use their time. You know, if you have your time, use your time, not a problem, but there should be a, a procedure or acceptable practice for, for, you know, for PTO or, or time off usage. And I think you were sent in, in, in email, something that it looks like the, I think the borough manager might have put together regarding that. Or was that the, the social media policy?
That was just social media policy. We, we are still hammering out what an attendance policy would look like. I think it's something that council should discuss. Alex, do you think that should be discussed in executive session, or can we talk about it here?
I mean, it doesn't involve a specific employee or a legal matter, like a pending litigation matter, so you can just discuss it generally here.
Anybody have anything to add to that?
Have we had people that have been abusing the, the time? I mean, recently, as far as sick or any of that?
Andrew, I mean, I'll, I'll let you speak to that. I mean, it's just, it's definitely something that like, you know, I don't want a whole department out on vacation. You know what I mean?
So.
Like, I know that a lot of the, you know, anywhere I ever worked, if, if I wanted to, like, at the beginning of the year, we had a bid for our, like, our vacation weeks. Like, if I wanted to take these two weeks off, or a week here and a week there, like, there was a whole bidding process as soon as our, you know, our, our PTO was loaded into our HR system, and we would say, I want this week, I want that week, and that, those were our two vacation weeks, and then, you know, your sick time and your, your personal time you'd spent, however. But, I, I mean, you know, Andrew, I, I'm going to turn it over to you to answer that question.
I, I, look, I, I, with regard to PTO, no, Mindy, I, I'm not aware of any, any issues where that's been occurring, or abuse may or may not have been occurring, but we don't have a really solid tracking system for it. For, in particular, my concern is not sick time or vacation time. If you're sick, you're sick. If you want to go on vacation, you deserve to go on a vacation. I think the concern is about, not even just counting those days off, but counting time in, time out. I, I think that we should have set standards. I'm not, this is not an accusation about anybody in particular, but even I should be held to. So my suggestion, just as a brief overview, what we're looking at would be, and apparently this is pretty much standard, I'm working on this with Mike Diaz, is a, a rolling period of 60 or 90 days, in which employees could accumulate a certain number of latenesses of more than five minutes. Latenesses are counted as being more than five minutes past reporting time. There would be a time clock, which would be used to report to, so it would be pretty standard. You'd have to be personally in, clocking in at that time, or within five minutes of your clock-in period, before or after, by the way. Yeah, I mean, that would be basically, again, something that I think, a standard I should be held to. Obviously, I'm salaried, and if I need to have an early morning meeting, which doesn't happen too often, I have the authority to, to let myself do that, but if I'm clocking in at 8:09 consistently, it's inappropriate, and I shouldn't be doing it, just like nobody should be doing it. I'm not doing it, by the way, for the record.
Okay.
I like the time.
Yeah, I do, I do think a time clock is, is appropriate. I'd like everybody to report to the borough, and, and, you know, before they're, at the beginning of their shift. And, and I think we need to keep a closer look at how, you know, how, how, you know, people are clocking in and out of work. And I, I think it's something that, that should have been, probably should have been done a long time ago, but I think it's something that needs to happen. So it's, uh, it's definitely going to be on the agenda for, for, I guess, next meeting. Alex, do I need? Sorry about that. Hold on just a second. Sorry. Do I need a, a formal vote of council in a, you know, a regular voting meeting in order to approve, I'm going to kill these dogs, in order to approve the expenditure for the time clock?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a motion, though, you don't need a resolution.
Okay. Uh, does anybody have anything to add to that?
I was also going to say, we can also, where you have, where they fill out a person's days, want either for big, or personal time. And first person who, as people turn it in, that's when Andrew can approve or not approve it. Um, I know at work, we have that, where you have to put in the time. Time in and get it approved. The person has like, your person, you give it, has like five days to turn it back, to let the person know if it's approved or not. Um, and also, um, people, any time in the, turn it in, and want the same days off, then go by seniority. I don't know how that works at the borough, but that's one way we could work on that.
No, I think it's, it's actually a, a good idea. I mean, in the real world, when you, you have, where there's several employees, you know, we, we can't risk having an entire department, you know, take a whole vaca, a whole department take three days vacation, and then we have a non-operational department. I, I do think that the borough manager should be in a position where he is approving vacation time. You know, there should be two kinds of time off. It should be approved and unapproved. If you call out sick, or if you take a vacation day that's unapproved, that should count as an occurrence. So many occurrences should result in the, in the progression of disciplinary action. That's the way it works in most employers, with most employers. But, you know, I do, I do think that, Andrew, you should be working with Mike Diaz to see if we could draft up what is the most common acceptable practice across all industries in terms of attendance policies, you know, lateness, punch-in, punch-out procedure, et cetera. But I will be proposing a time clock, the placing of a time clock at Borough Hall, where all employees of the borough will have to report at the beginning of their shift, and then they can disseminate out from that central location to wherever they're, you know, if their, if their job is somewhere on the road, or somewhere out, you know, another part of the borough. But they would have to clock in and clock out from one central location.
So we're working on the attendance policy now. That's actually essentially done. We just have a couple, just started to discuss about job abandonment, and that's really it. The, the social media policy is out, it's in the email that went along with the agenda. I suggest you look at it. It just, it's standard. I mean, it's like cookie cutter, what everybody uses. It just, you know, you can't put threatening stuff on social media, you can't put racist stuff on social media. You can't misrepresent the boroughs. You couldn't say, my employer's going to do X, when that's not really the case, or alternatively, you know, any, anything like that, divulging something inappropriate, trying to make the employer look bad. I mean, again, I think it's pretty standard stuff, you know, political speech is allowed, you're allowed to have your opinions, you're allowed to be radical, you just can't threaten anybody.
Or intimidate, or berate.
Or libel or something.
Right, all right. Not bad. I can, I can dig it. We'll, we'll have that on the agenda for next, for the, the full, full meeting. Is there anything anybody would like to add to that? No? All right, I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Kyle Willis to discuss anything from the Public Works Committee. Oh, wait, was somebody going to chime in?
Yeah, Joe, I think there were a couple of other things that we discussed that you wanted to talk about previously in a meeting?
Refresh my memory, because if it's not on the agenda, I won't remember.
Yeah, so, so we had, and I'm, I'm drawing a blank too. I have my notes at work, of course, that's not helpful, is it? We had hiring practices.
Yes, yes, so we were, we were discussing an anti-nepotism ordinance. So Alex Baumler did send something over to me, or solicitor, that was adopted by a neighboring, no neighboring, a municipality that I, I actually, I was impressed with. Is this Norristown?
Yes, this is Borough Norristown. Well, they're not borough anymore, but yeah, it's Norristown.
What are they?
They are a homeworld charter, so they are their own separate island. You can't call them a borough technically, but they're just a municipality at this point.
Really?
Terrible, terrible for identifying what they are.
So how does, that, that's interesting. How are they working that?
So there's provisions in the law that basically say you can be a township, you can be a borough, you could be a city, or you can adopt your own charter, and you are permitted by law to do anything that those other entities are allowed to do, and then some, so long as there's not a state statute that says you can't do it. It's weird.
So what, what are the changes now in Norristown? What do they, what do they got?
Well, I mean.
What, what did this change afford them?
Not to get too far into the woods, but, so they have a homeworld charter, and that allows them greater freedom to adopt ordinances. For example, this anti-nepotism ordinance actually falls under their homeworld charter, rather than the regular code of ordinances, because the borough code, the township code, and the city code don't actually have anything that addresses this issue. So this allows them, basically, the freedom to craft an ordinance on their own. And unless it's challenged in a court of law, the state lawmakers say it's illegal, it stands.
Interesting, okay. All right. Good to know.
Side tangent.
All right, so moving on to, so, you know, it's something that I, I would like everybody to consider, maybe I could disseminate that out to other council members, get their feedback on that. Can anybody offer any, any thoughts on that?
And Joe, I guess you should probably just highlight, the concept here is that it's not an outright ban or prohibition on hiring a qualified or otherwise spectacular candidate for a borough position, just because they happen to be the husband or wife, or the blood relative of somebody that is currently a borough council member, the borough manager, or borough employee. It's just, what it would be, would be a prohibition of just strictly hiring a family member, wife, a husband, a blood relative, or somebody that you have a business interest with, just strictly based on that relationship, meaning if they had no qualifications or no merit toward the position they're applying for, and you couldn't hire them.
Okay. Anybody? Any thoughts on that? All right, so we're, something that, that we will be considering at, at the full meeting. I'd like to turn it over to Councilman Willis to discuss any new events from Public Works.
All right, um, so on the agenda, you see, it says, discuss update with bulk trash, that now turns out to be an aspirational point on the agenda. There was issues getting the number of phone bids that we needed to move forward with this. Many businesses don't have the staffing or the capacity to help us out, it seems, in this moment, so we're still trying to find other bidders for this work. As of now, our bulk trash situation sits as is. I believe that was really all that was on my end of things, some missing something.
All right, very good. I'm going to under new business too. Just remind me, Andrew, that I have something under new business for the driveway committee, when it's, when it's my time. When it's, when it's my time.
Got it.
So, uh, let me get back to my, trying to do this paperless bit. So my phone doesn't stay open. So I gotta go back into my agenda every time I, I have a lull and, and, you know. So, uh, we're on to public safety. I'm going to turn that over to Councilwoman Ruskowski.
I have no new business to report, Joe.
Okay. Very good. On to, uh, public health and literacy, Councilwoman Isaac.
Nothing new to report.
All right. Municipal planning and zoning, Councilman Waters.
Uh, I'd like to discuss changing Delmar Drive to Obama Drive.
I, uh, I actually, I'm not against.
Serious.
I'm not against it. I mean,
The president, first black president, I, I like it.
I'm, I'm not against it either. I mean, there are several other streets in this municipality that are named after presidents.
Exactly.
Taylor. You know, Garfield. Uh, there are many, many presidents.
Yes.
Uh, named in this municipality. I mean, I'm, I don't know who Delmar is. Does anybody know the history of why it's called Delmar Drive? Does anybody, like, is there any historical significance of that? That, like, I'm not trying to, you know, if there was some important guy who did some important stuff here in Falkroft way back when and it's named for him, you know, I would reconsider, but like, who's Delmar? I mean, I, I don't really think it has much.
I can hear you.
Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you now, yeah.
I mean, I still, I don't recognize any historical significance of the name. And I don't know. I mean, I think, you know, Falkroft is, uh, a diverse community. President Obama was our first African-American president. You know, there are a hundred reasons why I would support this. Does anybody have anything to add to that?
Are you going to support what I come up with next?
Uh, I mean,
Let's see.
What, what do you got?
Has a good name to it on Cricket Lane.
What's that?
Trump Drive has a real good ring to it on Cricket Lane.
Trump Drive?
Trump Drive.
Uh, I mean, you know, yeah, I mean, you know, if you can get the votes, I would, uh,
Those, that vote, the both votes will happen at the same meeting.
All right. All right. Does anybody have anything to ever, there's a lot of very quiet, very quiet council today.
I think if we're changing names on streets, I, we should go with vote and have the, you know, let the public decide as well. Not just, not just us. I think, because it's a big, you know, we don't want any, um, riots or anything like that in our town because of a street name. So we want to be, especially with the way the world is today.
Right.
There should be a public vote on that. I don't know if anybody else agrees. That's my own opinion. I think that I'm, I'm okay with changing the names on both streets and how we want to do it. But I'm just, I'm concerned that there might be people in the, um, area that might not completely be okay with that. And we don't want riots starting or the sign torn down and that kind of stuff.
Right. Um,
Just to get rid of this past weekend.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying?
May I, may I put some reality into some of this?
Yes.
Um, Trump Drive, what, whatever. I'm not going there. But the reality is that when you do change a name, remember that you have businesses and residences and others that are on that street that have to change all their billing. All, you know, so every, every check that they have is no longer, they've got to buy new checks. So just when you're thinking of all of this, you've got, I will tell you that we have had almost riots in other municipalities when they've decided to change a name. Because people don't want to spend the money. They don't want to have that inconvenience of making the, uh, changes that they need to make for every, every, uh, bill, bill they may have. So I'm just throwing it out there just so that's, that's the reality check side and you guys can decide whatever you want to do.
Fair enough.
Not to, uh, not to be a further throw of cold water onto it too, but I did some research this afternoon too, and you guys don't actually have any provisions in your streets ordinance right now that gives you any process or essentially authority to do this. Now, there's vague authority in the borough code and the case law that essentially says you can use your police powers and your public health and safety powers to rename a street. But, uh, unlike pretty much every other municipality out there, you don't have set, uh, procedures. Meaning if you guys were going to do this, you could do it by a resolution to rename your street, but you'd also face a pretty easy legal challenge in a court of law to throw this thing out.
Huh. So we'd have to do an ordinance?
Yeah, you'd have, you'd have to, you know, put the cart before the horse. You'd have to pass an ordinance essentially that gives you the authority to rename streets and a exact process that you would need to follow first. And then you would rename each individual street via an ordinance.
Intro.
That way the public could be notified. They would have the hearing. They would have their opportunity to comment upon the proposed action before it passed up.
So we'd have to, we'd have to establish a process for street renaming.
Right, right. And then go the ordinance route in order to rename an individual street. Which it can be done. It's just, you know, we'd have to draft it. We'd have to amend your code and all that fun stuff before we do it.
Okay. All right. Um, I actually don't hate the idea, but, uh, it's something to think about. I mean, we have time on that. I, I mean, if we have to amend our code, I mean, we've got a lot of other priorities right now.
Right.
I mean, we've got, we've got some work to do. And, you know, I'd rather rename a beautifully newly developed street after we've got all that work done and then give it a, a, a new name than, you know what I mean? I don't know. I mean, I, I, I'm all for it, but I mean, it's going to take some time to get the, you know, the, to give ourselves the authority to do that. That's a whole nother task. How long would an ordinance take for that, Alex? I mean, we've, we've been, we've been working you like a dog the past, uh, the past couple of weeks with this, with these ordinances. We're going to have to pass a special session.
Yeah.
So, I mean,
So, I mean, time wise in this process, you would authorize me to draft and advertise a street ordinance to set the criteria at the August meeting here in two weeks. And then I would go out and do it. We'd have it ready in time for the September meeting. And then if it's passed and it's codified, then the process will begin again. You'd authorize me to draft the renaming of that particular street. And then we'd advertise and all that fun stuff. So best case scenario, you'd pass the renaming of the street at the end of October. Probably more realistic scenario would be November, uh, if everything tracks. And of course you have the votes in order to do this.
Okay. All right. Good to know. All right. Uh, does anybody have any thoughts on that? Quiet crew tonight. Tough crowd. Woo! All right. So, uh, moving, moving on to parks and recreation, I'd like to turn it over to Councilwoman Daly.
All right. Um, we need to discuss obtaining a license for our outdoor movie. Obviously we had talked about doing it this past Sunday, but it turns out we do indeed need a license. I believe the cost, Andrew, was 300 for the license.
Yes.
Um, so that would put us over a thousand dollars for the movie. I had mentioned to Andrew, we might want to reach out to some of the businesses that usually sponsor for Community Day and see if maybe they're interested in sponsoring for that. And holding it either beginning of, I would say probably beginning of September instead of now, today, I guess.
Yeah, because it's, it's been so oppressively hot these past couple of weeks. I don't want to sit in a, in a field that hasn't been debugged in the, the heat of the peak heat of summer, watch a movie while I'm itching myself.
Yeah, I would say probably mid to late September would probably be really ideal.
Yeah. I mean, what does everybody think on that?
I don't think we need sponsors even better.
I think that's a good idea.
But September for that. I agree with Joe.
Uh, let's, so, uh, I mean, I would be willing to approve the expense, but I don't see it, I don't, you know, let's, I mean, let's get the expense approved so we can get this done, but, um, I, I think actually it would be good to ask for community sponsors. Can we do both?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I mean, that would be Alex. Alex, should we just approve it and then if we get the money, it changes it?
Yeah, I mean, we'll just, you just craft the motion to essentially put an outer cap on what you're approving and then, you know, the caveat sentence, you know, subject to donations of this number could come down.
All right. So I don't think, I mean, I think because we're not going to be able to do a community day, it's probably not a bad idea to do this instead of or in addition to whatever else we come up with. Um,
Maybe we could do like, um, like, leading up to Halloween, maybe we could do every weekend we'll do, oh, this dog, this dog, excuse me. She just,
If we do that, if we, if this is something we want to do consistently, we should purchase our own screen, our own projector and speakers. The, the pool owns our own stuff. The fact that it's $700 to do this is crazy town to me. The screen costs $150 at Target.
Actually, that's not a bad point.
Say if something we're going to do more than once, it's something we probably should invest in.
I actually think you're right. Steve Giancristofaro, how would, how would it, uh, a, a sound system? Like something that we could move from that facility to maybe behind the new Borough Hall when we get it? Because we're going to have a, we're going to have a, um, if we're going to have the amphitheater. I don't know. I mean, there's just, there's, is there, are there sound systems that could be reconstituted at another location? Like if, say, we're going to do it behind the current Borough Hall for the remainder of this year and then, you know, can that be moved to another location if we're, if we're going to do this as something in, you know, in the fall on the regular, which I think would be great?
I think you're talking, yeah, I think you're talking, Joe, about two separate systems. Your system for the building is going to have to probably remain in the building because that's wired in, um, to speakers in the building and so forth. For the outside entertainment thing, you'd have to get a portable sound system. And you'd have to have either a generator or something there to actually run it. So it'll be two separate systems, a portable system for your outside entertainment and then a, a built-in system for your inside the building. You can, you can get a portable system and use it inside the building, but, um, it's really not practical because you're, you're going to have to have speakers in the ceiling and things like that for your in-house system. So.
What, the thing that's good about doing this as an investment is when we have events, we don't have to hire a DJ. We can use the out, the equipment then for playing music and things like that. So we could, if we decide to buy speakers and a, um, audio system, it would get a ton of use for arts, um, for whatever, parks and recreation. So we wouldn't ever have to pay for a DJ ever again.
Right. I mean, we, we could, we could have the DJ make us a playlist, pay him for his playlist and just run it all day. I mean, really? So, uh, technically, yes, but that's, that's true.
You don't have to pay a DJ. You literally can hook your phone up to your playlist. Not hard.
No.
Um, so that's something to talk about. I could get pricing to see what that kind of stuff runs. Uh, I'm, I'm, oh, I'm pretty sure that we could get a system. Kyle might be able to back me up. He likes electronics. For less than a thousand dollars.
But I mean, I don't want to, so here's the thing. I don't want to buy something dirt cheap because it's cheap and looks good that doesn't last. Like I'd rather spend a, you know, a, a, not ridiculous amount of money, but a reasonable amount of money in an investment on something that's going to get, we're going to get a good few years out of. I mean, I think outdoor movies is a great social distance activity. You know, you set your blanket up with your family. Another family's 10 feet away from you. We're not on top of one another. It's not indoors. It's something we can do as a community. I actually love the idea and I think it's something that we should do more than once. I think it's something that maybe we could do more regularly. Can we get some feedback from folks?
I actually like the idea of that. I also agree with you, Joe, that if we're going to invest in that, it should be something that will last a good while, not something that next year we're going to have to repurchase because it fell apart or didn't last a whole year.
Right.
We don't say we stop using it in mid-October because it gets too cold. And then all of a sudden we don't use it again until mid-May, let's just say, worst case scenario with winter. Um, it doesn't start warming up enough to be outside at night until mid-May, let's just say. And if we go to try it, it doesn't work. So I agree. We should be doing research for that.
Now let's keep in mind that every movie we show is going to require a license. Am I right?
You can purchase a license for an entire year. I'm not sure what the cost of that is, but they could, there is like a three-month licensing, a six-month licensing package that you can pre-buy so that you can continue to show movies weekly. So that's something we can definitely, um, look into if it's something that we want to do consistently.
Um, how fast can this be done? So in other words, can we get our own?
Takes three days to get. Super easy.
I mean, in terms of we're going to make the investment in our own equipment, if we're going to have our meeting in two weeks and we want to have this in late September, are we going to be able to procure all the proper equipment in order to use our own equipment? Or are we going to have to, I mean, I, I think we should probably entertain with the vendor for the sake of this, see how we do with this.
Oh, yeah. I definitely agree too, but I'm thinking that if this is something we want to do long-term, that
I don't want to pay him $700 every time.
You're not paying $700 for some guy to stand there and play a movie.
Right.
I mean, it's crazy. It's not hard. I do it weekly at the pool. It's not difficult.
Right.
Green is inflatable. It takes three minutes. And I mean, you're talking about a $150 screen. I've had it for five years. It blows up, no problem. It sits in the shed all winter. It's, you know, got a warranty on it, whatever.
Nice.
But I mean, I can look into the speaker systems and, uh, projectors. They're not terribly expensive.
All right. And we want to, we're talking a big screen. We'll get the big John.
Yeah. Yeah. Twelve by 12 at the pool. And it, uh, five years ago, I think it cost us maybe $200.
Okay.
And that was with a warranty on it. So, which we haven't. So.
All right. So I think, uh, so we agree that we'll, we'll do the, the vendor thing this time and we'll get the, the one-time license. It's like 200 bucks, 300 bucks or whatever, 300. And then, uh, I guess also ask them what the, what the yearly license is. We'll get the yearly license from them and then tell them, ah, well, we got our own screen.
Or seasonal. They do a seasonal one too.
Okay.
Like three months, but you can always show like a certain amount of movies or certain kinds of movies.
Right.
I mean, there, there's rules, but it's fine. They're figureoutable.
Okay.
Like how I made my own word up there. You liked it.
That was, that was clever. I like that. Good work, Lee.
Also, our arts and crafts program is coming to an end. This week is our last week. We just did the bags for that. It was a complete hit. Families loved it. Lots of pictures coming through on Facebook. The kids had a blast. Jenna and I have been chatting about duplicating this, maybe going into the fall. Especially if kids are home, which it looks like from Southeast Stoker's website today, they will be. Maybe doing like a Community Day bag pickups, maybe some kind of Halloween kind of thing going into the fall. So we're going to keep working on ideas for that. And, uh, try to keep these kids busy with some arts and crafts if they're going to be stuck home, homeschooling, virtual, whatever it is. So, that's it for me though.
All right. Very good. Moving on to municipal legislation, Councilman McGuigan.
Got nothing.
Got nothing. That wasn't me, ground. Sorry. All right. Every time I try to unmute myself, this dog starts again. So I did get something from Joe Roto in my borough email, Jason, regarding your next, uh, the, the new construction committee. Did you get the same thing?
Which email? I get a lot from Joe.
Where is it?
That's the resolution.
That's the resolution that I, that I referred to earlier.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um.
For the sanitary connection.
Alright, that's gotta be actionable at the, the, I guess, if we're gonna do a special session with the ordinances, okay. So we can't do anything about it tonight, right? Lisa?
I, I don't know how this meeting is advertised, so if, if it's advertised that you can do action, then I would suggest to do it. If not, I, I, I just don't know how it was, it was advertised.
I think it's advertised. Is it advertised? Is it voting meeting or a workshop?
Just workshop. You don't have voting authority in these meetings. So you don't take action in the August regular or special meeting to pass.
Special session. Okay. Are we close to being able to call that special session to approve those ordinances?
Yeah, I was gonna do it in my report, but um, the ordinance is drafted and done on my end. It's out to the bank because per the terms of a loan agreement, they have to review every document that we put together. So as soon as I get their comments and notes back, which I'm hopeful, you know, within the next two days, then uh, we'll be ready to call the meeting and pass the ordinance. So, timing-wise, this is gonna require seven days prior notice because it's an ordinance, even though we're calling a special meeting, which only calls, it takes 24 hours notice. If you have a seven-day rule, that trumps it. So best-case scenario would be next Thursday or Friday that we would do this. If not, worst-case scenario, you have your meeting on the 18th and we just do it on the 8th.
Alright, uh, Jason, I'm sorry, we kinda took your thunder there. Let me, let me put you back on the, any reports you have about your committee. And I'm gonna let you decide what you want to do. If you want to do an early meeting, advertise early, we'll do it. But, uh.
And you don't always want to go faster, but it sounds like if we advertise, we're only gonna go four days before our regular meeting anyway.
Right, yeah, you would view it as Thursday or prior. So, yeah, you're right. There's like three days in between.
If the cost is, I don't know if the cost is worth it. I mean, you're, you're looking at a cost to advertise in the paper. I don't, I mean, just for four days, you're gonna change the scope of this project.
True. Uh, we still have to advertise the ordinances anyway, don't we?
Correct. Yeah, the ordinances. You just would save a little bit of money on the second advertisement.
Right.
Okay. Alright, um, Jason, are you cool with waiting the four days?
I'm good with waiting the four days.
Andrew, get those advertisements fired off for uh, for the, the ordinances as soon as possible. Like, if we could do it, I'm sorry, go ahead, Alex.
Joe, I have them done. Um, they're very specific as far as language and template required by D E C D, so I will complete them and I'll send them out to Andrew tomorrow.
Okay, and fire them off as soon as you can, Andrew, to the, to the press, wherever they gotta go.
Sounds good. Let's do it.
Alright. Jason, anything else?
That's a wrap.
Nice. Alright, so, uh, what have we got? Uh, where we at here?
The police chief's report if you would like to give one.
Yes. Thank you, Andrew. Chief?
I don't have a police report for you now. I'm way filled two weeks.
Okay. Sorry, Alex, I skipped to you. Do you have any more for your solicitor's report?
Um, just one other quick thing. Uh, today we got a, a right-to-know request sent to the Police Department with Chief Bear. It's another, this one's from the University of Penn. It's their law school. They're doing a, basically a police reform search and request. They're asking for all kinds of police records and policies and manuals and things relating to Miranda rights and all kinds of other fun stuff like that. Uh, I just wanted to bring it up because it's probably something that you guys are gonna deal with, um, I would say, on a regular basis going forward here with the political climate and of course the events that occurred over the summer. So, um, we're just gonna be inundated with um, right-to-know requests for police records, for police policies. And, you know, as always, we'll try and give them everything that we're legally allowed to, but at the same time, you know, we're probably gonna fight a bunch of these just based on appeals. We'll deny them. And then there's a right of appeal to the Right-to-Know Records Bureau in the middle of the state. And um, there is a right to appeal. They might say you have to turn over X, Y, and Z based on their review of the situation, but uh, it, it's something that's gonna come up again and again and again, uh, because of the current climate. So just be aware. Um, unfortunately, it's just like one of those things that, you know, you're probably gonna spend a lot more on legal fees than you ever intended to this year, uh, because of these requests.
Alex, what's your one for the fee schedule for these?
So our fee schedule is, we're on a flat monthly retainer, but this would be like one of the special litigation issues.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off. I don't mean your fee schedule. I mean the fee to use these copies of these documents.
So generally, and I mean, the breadth of this one that was requested today were six items. There's no dates on them, so, I mean, it could stretch back to as far as uh, you have actual police records for. Uh, we could talk tens of thousands of documents. Now, we usually deny these because of that over breadth. We go and ask them to come back and narrow it if they do have a request, but again, I mean, they're asking for everything and anything under the sun related to your police department, so the cost, um, as far as copying is astronomical as well.
Then we'll charge them a dollar a page. Can we charge them a dollar a page?
Yeah, you can, up to, I believe, and uh, I'll confirm, we have a right-to-know expert that, attorney that handles all these matters for us in all one municipalities. Her name's Courtney Richardson. I believe the max is two to $2.50 per page allowed under the law, but I mean, again, if you continue to receive these requests, you have to turn over documents.
Can we have a different, can we have a different menu of fees? So in other words, a resident would get this fee and then a non-resident would pay this fee. Are we allowed to do that?
No, that, that violates the Constitution. So, yeah, it would have to be the same, but again, you know, based on, we'll, we'll see how this shakes out with the number of requests that are coming in, but if we continue to get inundated with them, I would say charge the max that's allowed under the law.
Yep, that's what we're gonna do. And then Andrew, if a resident comes in and he decides you're not gonna charge the fee, I mean, is that something he can do? Can he waive the fee?
Could, uh, if they demonstrate a special need or circumstance.
Okay.
That would be up to them to argue. Again, your ordinary right-to-know request is not voluminous. It's usually, you know, I want a copy of an ordinance or I want to see a copy of a 10-page contract.
Yeah, if you're asking for tens of thousands of documents, you're looking for a hit piece. So, I'm sorry, that's how it makes me feel. But they're certainly welcome to it. We will never deny them whatever they request, but they will pay for it and that'll be that.
Right.
So I'd like to find out what the fee is for the, for, per page for, for a right-to-know request. I'd like to have that examined and I'd like to have that revised if need be.
Well, Mr. President, to your point, you could make it that, uh, we would start charging anything over 10 pages so that the residents that come in and ask for simple documents wouldn't get hurt by it.
Actually, that's a great, that's a great idea.
And quite frankly, I mean, we never suggest that you charge a per fee if the documents are already in electronic format and can be emailed. So there's always that option too. Um, and then if there are voluminous, voluminous records that we would have to turn over, you always have the option of telling the person that's requesting it, you know, we'll physically make these available at the Borough Hall. If you want to bring in your own scanner and inspect them that way and scan whatever you want, that's up to you. So, I mean, that cuts down on fees too.
I'd rather charge a $2 a page.
You can do that, but it's a time sink. You just always have to remember how much of your Borough employees' time is being wasted on producing those documents.
True. True. Alright, so how do we, exactly, what, what do we charge now, Andrew? What's the cost?
Nothing as far as I'm aware. But I, I've also not been asked to produce any hard copies. The only things that we get are requests about fees or fines or liens on any properties or anything like that from usually like real estate companies. And I know we get a recurring right-to-know request from, I believe, the Carpenters Union. Lisa, I, I sent one to you recently. It's like a recurring every month or so. He asks for uh, any bids or anything that might have to do with carpentry work.
Yeah, you'll get a lot of those and you'll get a lot of fishing expeditions from kind of companies looking for information on employees and employment records that usually can deny, but you see, you, you see the same four or five actors always requesting those. But again, if it's something that you have to turn over and it's already in a created list, an email doesn't cost any money to produce, so you generally have to charge for that.
I think, if I, if memory serves me correctly, I think somewhere, I mean, I recall that the practice used to be, you know, 25 cents per page. But I don't, I don't know if there's any documentation of that, of that fee being levied. But, so let's, let's find out what the maximum is. Let's get some research on that, find out what the max is. I like Jason's idea with anything over 10 pages, you'll pay the, the, that maximum fee. And I think, you know, that's where we go. And then, uh, you know, they'll, they'll, you know, records request, it'll be first request pending payment of the fee.
Right. And if we can turn them over.
Right.
Who is our right-to-know officer?
Yeah, that was my question as well, because we had appointed Tony and she's. Right, so Tony has just retired, so we will need to appoint another right-to-know officer.
I mean, typically, it's your Borough Manager, it's your Township Manager that takes that mantle, but you can appoint someone else if you'd like as well.
Uh, Andrew? To your Borough Manager, Secretary and, and Right-to-Know Officer, which I don't think is inappropriate.
Only if I can be called sir if I'm an officer.
Only if you can be what?
Called sir.
I don't know about that, but uh, you know, um, I mean, we have to vote on that. It has to be, you know, something that probably should be put on the agenda for the next meeting. We're gonna have to declare another right-to-know officer. Uh, thank you for bringing that up, Jason. I'm glad that came up. That must be on the agenda. So we, I mean, we have to have one declared. Um, I think there's like requirements and stuff to that. Is that correct, Alex?
Yeah, I mean, you had one obviously declared, but you, you, you're just gonna fill a vacancy until your next reorg meeting. I mean, it's not an elected position, but you'll still need to just appoint one temporarily until you reorg.
Can we do that now?
Um, no, because you're not allowed to vote here.
So Andrew, you are acting right-to-know officer.
Yeah, I'll have a champagne after this meeting.
Yeah, right. Um, yeah, so I guess that's where we're at on that. Um, how much did they ask for, Alex? Do you know how much documentation they, like, what, what do they, what do they want?
So, um, they want every policy. They want, I mean, they don't want arrest records, but essentially they want every other police internal document um, as far as like policy, procedures, arrest statistics, all kinds of, you know, everything. Essentially, any record that the Police Department produces that wouldn't be tied to an active criminal investigation is what they want. It's a think tank, it's a ten law school, but you're seeing these from both sides of the political spectrum and academic worlds too. I mean, everybody's just trying to gather as much information on police departments as possible. Figure out, you know, what are the next solutions? What's the legislation you'd look at, at the federal level regarding police reform, so. But it's a massive thing. I mean, it would require probably a couple of months to get through all the information that they requested in this letter.
Okay. Alright. Okay, so Borough Manager's Report. I'm sorry, forgive me, back that up. Uh, Finance Director's Report. Joe, are you on the call?
Yeah, I am, Joe. Thank you.
Alright, and remind me, Joe, I have, is Mark with you too?
No, he's not. He's, they're, he's in, caught in a flood down in Darby. They got hit bad today.
Yeah, they, they, this is, they all, every time there's a hurricane, they get it the worst. I don't know.
Yeah, there, there's a lot of properties halfway up the porch.
Oh, my God.
Um, I just wanted to bring up one thing. I sent it to Alex to, not to Alex, I'm sorry, uh, to Andrew today. We're, either this month or next month, we're gonna have to pass the um, MMO contribution, the Borough's portion. And it went up about 125,000 from last year, so it's, it's a pretty significant increase. And it's due to the gross wages and how the investments are and stuff, but um, I'm hoping that uh, the state may do some kind of um, they level or they smooth, it's a smoothing process where they possibly could lower it and they, you push, but it has to come from the state. But that's our actuaries numbers. We have to prove it in, in uh, August or September. And then uh, and then that gets put into the budget for 2021. And that's our contribution, which would be about 524,000. That's the minimum contribution. And we're required by law to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, and then the amortization schedule that the bank set us for the loan, um, came in right, right, if everything stayed at, at, at 5%, which will come in lower than that, they just sent it at the max 5%, we'd be paying about $220,000 a year in uh, interest and principal. So if it comes in lower, it's just based on what we said, 200, a little bit lower than $200,000 will be our, our annual payment for the uh, the building, which is perfect. So I, there was no sticker shock, uh, sticker shock with that. Next, it'll come in perfect. So it's just, um, I, we got $99,000 today, got wired in from um, Keystone. But like I said, this is probably the last quarter that we start getting big numbers. If this pandemic continues and people are still out of work, we're gonna start feeling it in September, October. I started the process with the budget. I'll have numbers for you next in two weeks, just, just to ballpark and we can prepare going into September and October for what we're looking at in 2021. But uh, we're doing okay right now. Um, better than a lot of municipalities. It's just, but with the courts closed, not being able to do inspections, that money's not in, not, not there that was there last year. I'm just hoping some of these projects come through with the permits that'll really help us in the fall and in the winter.
Can we, um, who says we're not allowed to do inspections?
I don't know. Well, I don't think anybody does. It's just, we can start the process, I guess. It just have to be all COVID restrictions would have to be followed.
Do we have some degree of income that pen, that is pending those inspections?
Yeah, well, we, we put out bills, people paid them and then the inspections have been scheduled and then it'll be rescheduled and stuff. So we've gotten some money in. But we haven't gotten any, but it's, 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 where the money's gonna be coming in, there's a couple of those big projects we have. That's what I was counting on for this year. Uh, you know, the, the, the storage unit and the 7-Eleven, some of those other projects, that'll help us out a lot coming into the end of the year. But we're okay cash flow now. I'm just, I'm just interested to see what happens when we get our third quarter numbers from Keystone. That's where, I don't think they even know yet, because like I told you before, the collections at the, our income tax lag and um.
Is there anything I need to be doing right now, Joe, to, because, I mean, I don't want to like wake up one day and get a call and say, oh, we're, we're not flush. We're not, we're not okay now.
No, no, I mean, I'll, I'll give you numbers two weeks, a year to date and you'll see, but um, you know, it's just, it's, it's cash flow. We're doing okay right now. We're right on board where we, where we're last year, but um, going into the fall.
But we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a $100,000 spike in our expenses with the, with the MMO contribution, right?
Going into 2021, yeah. That, that, to meet that, obviously, but we may be offset, may, may be able to offset that in other ways too, so. I'm more concerned about cash flow coming in the fall and winter because it's, nobody knows what's gonna happen. And then this next um, congressional uh, stimulus package, the Democrats, I think, want to put money in there for the state and the local municipalities, but I don't think the Republicans want to. So that's, I mean.
Of course not.
You know, and most of these states and cities, like Philadelphia, there's 670 million in the hole. We're nowhere near that. We're not in the hole anyway, but we're getting to a point where um, I don't know what the state can provide for us. My, I have a suggestion. I don't know if Lisa would think of this anyway, but do, we have a lot of liquid fuel money. We can't use it for operating costs. But the state sends a lot of the liquid fuel money that we pay through our gas tax that funds the state police budget, which is, is like us taking our liquid fuel money and funding our local police budget. I just think with, with general fund monies being down, I doubt it, it would ever happen, but if they could let us use that money a little bit more liberal, liberally than we have in the past, instead of just for roads made us, that could help us too, but that's a pipe dream. Lisa might add something.
There's, the liquid fuels fund can be used for various things. Um, what you've got to look at though, you could use it for traffic signals, you can use it for signs, you can use it for um, equipment purchases up to 25% but has to be used for, for roadway maintenance or whatever. Um, there's a list. There's a list of eligible uh, expenses. Um, some of our, our engineering, for example, if we were doing something with the signal, that engineering could be taken from your liquid fuels. So you can certainly look at it um, differently. I think, um, it's always been done, the way it's been done in a, in, in a lot of municipalities because it's easier when you do the 965, your annual report that's due at the end of January for the previous year. You have to report how you use those liquid fuels funds. So that, you know, you do have to think out of the box a, a little bit as to whether the liquid fuels money can be used for specific um, projects and how you, how you can justify it.
Yeah, that's, that's what I say, but I, it's just, we have a quite bit of money there, so I will be more, I'll make sure, I'll get through the engineer if we're allowed to use it for certain projects. Use it a little differently than we have in the past. We've just been pretty conservative with it in the past, just using it on street lighting and road maintenance. That's why we have such a good, good amount in there. Um, but it's just, you know, it's, it's, we're, we're, we're good. But it's just, you know, it's, we're, we're, we're good with cash. It's just like I said, I'm going to have to really analyze it so you guys are aware in two weeks, just so you see where we're at. But I'm not trying to worry anybody. It's just, I don't like looking into the financial forecast and that. And it's real gray because you don't know what to expect. I mean, is there going to be another shutdown? Depending on what TV station you listen to, what politician you listen to, it's all different. And there's no really set rules or, and you don't know if any money's coming. And you know, and that's the only thing I could project before in the past because I knew it was coming in. Now I can't. So I'm just, you know, getting, getting in as much information as I can from the state and from the, and from our local politicians to see where we're at. But you know, it's not a worry. It's just, it's just, let's be aware of our, you know, if we have to go buy something, let's be smart about it. You know, and, and, you know, manage our overtime like we are, stuff like that. Just stuff that we can control, try to control a little differently than we have in the past.
Hey, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Just to, not to rain on the, any parade or anything, but when you refer to state and local money, there was state and local money on the last package. We're not considered the local. That money goes to the county. That money will never come to a local municipality.
Okay. So there, there was something that went to the county. So the county got some sort of relief.
Believe the county got, believe the county got 89 million.
Can anybody else verify that? Because I want some of that.
Oh, I don't think they're giving it out.
I think some of it went to like local businesses for, in grants and stuff like that. But they're not just giving it to local municipalities.
Okay.
That I'm aware of.
Oh, wow. Andrew, can you find out more about that?
Sure.
I mean, I, I'd find it hard to believe that they gave 89 million out to local businesses. But, and I can tell you that municipalities in this county are struggling. We're in good shape as far as I'm told and as far as our records indicate. I don't know that that's the case for other municipalities.
We have no debt, which is a big thing. We have no debt at all. And that's a big thing.
Right. So that's a, you know.
Joe, I think they used that money that, you know, while they gave it out to grants of local businesses and stuff like that, they're using it to recoup some of the costs that they've lost too. And I mean, you gotta remember that we have a, you know, multi-hundred-million-dollar budget as well. I think if they started to divide it up, money for seven municipalities.
Yeah. I mean, I, I get you. I get you. So, all right. Well, I think, Lisa, didn't you say the county did approve us for some grants? For the storm sewer grant?
We just got community development block grant money. Somebody should probably announce that at the meeting for Grant and Delview sanitary sewer improvements. We're supposed to have a meeting, I think we have to, I want to say it's the 25th of August that we have to get to Phil Welsh with the, to have a meeting for the subrecipitant agreements.
All right. So who needs to be working on this? Because they need to be on this yesterday. Andrew, is there something that you need to coordinate with that?
Not that I'm aware of.
It should be a letter that came out. I mean, we can, we can set up a meeting. That's, but someone from the borough needs to, they, they won't accept me because I, I am a consultant. So it has to be a member of council. Or Andrew would probably qualify to, to be in attendance to the meeting because I know what the rules are. I know how, how this process works. What they want to do is educate the, the elected officials as to what their responsibilities are as, as this recipient of the monies.
Andrew, make sure that that is worked out as soon as possible.
Sure.
All right.
Just, just so everybody's aware, that money has not hit the county at least Office of Housing and Community Development at this point. Typically you don't see, they won't see the funds for this program, for the 2021 program until September. So HUD, this is HUD money that goes directly to the county Office of Housing and Community Development for them to administer to these various municipalities that got funding.
All right. So we're not behind the curve then. We're, we're okay. Okay. All right. All right. So Borough Manager's report, remind me, again, I have something under old business or new business that I got to discuss with, with Joe and Mark. So, but Andrew, go ahead. Do you have a report for me?
That might be just one of the things that I wanted to discuss, just, you know, how things are going in the office. They've been relatively quiet. It's, it's nothing particularly crazy. The application on Indeed for the highway employee position closed today. We've gotten 274 applications, dozens from the Borough of Falkroft, dozens of CDLs. Some that I saw with 10, 20-plus years of highway employee experience, stuff like that. So I mean, beginning tomorrow, I plan to sort through these applications and start breaking them down. And then the goal would be to present them to council to make a decision about, you know, interviews, things like that. But it will be a 274-year process approximately.
So also what about the Office of, we've changed it from, from Senior Services to the Office of Resident Services, which was a part-time position. Do we have applicants for that role?
Yeah, we have a couple dozen applicants. So I narrowed it down to three people. We, you know, we, I mean, at any time we can start advertising for it. I will say, as we were sort of warned, we haven't had huge volume of work. Now officially, Tony is, is not an active employee of the borough, not an inactive employee of the borough. So I think it's appropriate to hire. Again, you know, anytime it's convenient for you guys, we can do interviews. I did some phone interviews and have, have my recommendations, but I'll leave you to make the final decision.
Yeah, I mean, give me your three best and.
Got it.
And we will, we'll take a look at them. And I think we should schedule their, have they been interviewed yet?
They've been given the preliminary phone interview, yes, but they've not been given, like, obviously the final interview because we haven't done that.
All right. Well, give me your three best and we'll, we'll, then we should probably get those interviews scheduled. Who's on the personnel committee? Is it me, Jason and Kyle?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Let's get that, let's get it done. Tony is now officially retired. Congratulations to Tony Melibrono and thank her for her, I thank her for her 19 years of service to the borough. I just wanted to say that publicly. I should have said it sooner. Forgive me. So moving on to old business, do we have anything under old business? No. So under new business, Joe, I was discussing with Mark. There's a property that is, and I don't want to say anybody's name, but there's a property that's having some difficulty selling next to Wawa on Chester Pike. And just with some foresight, I'm looking into the future here. The, the property where the current Borough Hall currently sits will at some point be redeveloped into better usage for housing. And that will mean that our highway department will need to find a new home. The property that is for sale can't sell. Apparently, if, I think if Mark's reports were correct, they were not able to close or to get settlement. They weren't able to settle on the property. My, so here's my angle. I'm interested in buying that property and that, that's where we would move our highway department. There is also a property, and I've reached out to, to Devood, I can't say his last name. He owns roughly, if my memory serves me correctly, 540 and 542 Falkroft Avenue. It's two lots that are sewn together that he owns both of them. They could possibly be procured. In any event, we're going to put our highway department somewhere. We're going to have to buy some land. The, the situation on, on Chester Pike is ideal. I think because it's not in a residential area, we're not going to be disturbing any residents or neighbors. I don't know. I think Mark was going to try and talk to the gentleman who owns the property. Do you know anything about that? Joe?
No, he mentioned something that you, and he's interested in parts of the property, but I don't know if he talked to the guy yet or not.
Okay.
And I don't know if he talked price or anything, if the guy was even interested. I'll find that out.
Alex, what's the process for the Borough? And let me ask you this before I do anything. Joe, are we in a financial situation to purchase a swath of land?
Just gonna, just would be what, what, what the price is. I mean, you know, if it's, if it's inexpensive, sure. I mean, we can always, we're not, we wouldn't have any problem getting another loan. But the point is just the cost of it and then figuring out what it off, what, what, what the payments would be to fix it up and make it set up for the highway department.
Okay.
I can't, can't tell you any other number.
All right. Alex, what's the process for procuring land for the Borough to buy it?
So you would start by hiring a qualified appraiser and doing a independent appraisal of the property to get you basically the fair market value and their opinion. And then you'll go from there. If you decide, then you can enter negotiations. And then of course you would pass an ordinance approving the purchase of the property if you ever enter, you know, a for-sale agreement. So be brought to the public, you'd have a hearing before it and you would pass it at that meeting. But again, this is a real estate matter. So I, I would say you probably don't want to divulge anything further because this is a subject that should be discussed in executive session.
Okay.
But yeah, that's, that's your general process. Go out, get an appraisal. We want to enter negotiations based on the fair market value of that and that's where you take it from there.
Should I hire the appraiser before the executive session or after?
Um, I, I would say let's discuss all this in executive session first.
Okay. All right. So Andrew, schedule an executive session for six o'clock the day before the meeting. I'm sorry, six o'clock the day of our, our regular meeting.
All right, got it. Six o'clock, day of regular meeting.
So our August whatever meeting, we'll have an executive session at six o'clock.
Can someone text me the exact date that it's going to be so I can make, so that way I.
Not next Tuesday, but the following.
Sounds like it would be the 11th?
August 18th, August 18th.
Okay. So that way I can decide if I'm going to take off or adjust my hours so I can be on at six.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. All right. So that is the end of new business.
There's one more thing.
Go ahead.
So just so you guys know, this is not something that we need to be worried about in particular, but Signal Services apparently needed their contract renewed back in December of last year. Supposedly they reached out, who knows, something like December 10th. I don't know. But they needed it renewed in January and apparently, obviously, as you know, we didn't do that. They've sent me a new copy of the, of the contract that they'd like us to sign. They've been operating under the terms apparently anyway, without our knowledge. I will send it out. It'll be on the agenda in the next council meeting. It's just a simple agreement with them to repair our lighting and signage.
Alex, is that something that has, is that something we could, could we do it that way?
Yeah. I mean, what other choice do you have at this point?
Right, that's fine. We don't have to put it out for bid or any of that, no, no?
No, I mean, you already contracted them. So it's just a renewal.
Good enough. All right. So it seems that that, does anybody have anything else to offer under old business or new business? Now, gone once, twice, sold, like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Can we get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned at approximately 8:24 PM on August the 4th.
See y'all.
Take care, everyone.
Night, everybody.
Night.
Night.